Thank you. Welcome to the Washington Elementary School Board Meeting for January 14, 2021. I do apologize for the technical difficulties we had earlier, but we are ready to begin now. Mr. Adams?
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to go ahead and start our Washington Elementary School Governor's Board meeting for January the 14th. And with that, and before I start, I'd like to just briefly say welcome to Jenny Abbott Bayardi. And also, we also have Lindsey Peterson, our new board members. Congratulations. We welcome you. And Mrs. Nikki Whaley, congratulations on your reelection. So we welcome you and we thank you and we look forward to a very, very prosperous and strong New Year, especially with all the challenges that we have. With that, Mrs. Tucker, would you be kind enough to go ahead and do a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Governing Board members present, Governing Board Vice President, Mr. Bill Adams, Governing Board Members, Mr. Larry Herrera, Ms. Nikki Whaley, Ms. Jenny Abbott Bayardi, and Ms. Lindsey Peterson.
Thank you. With that, I'll now move on to the organization of the board. And the first thing we want to do is, we want to read to you the duties of the President and Vice President. Mrs. Tucker, would you be kind enough to do so, please?
Yes, thank you. The Duties of the President. The duties of the President of the Board shall be as follows. Beside over all meetings and conduct meetings in accordance with Arizona law and policies of the district. E, consult with the Superintendent and, on behalf of the Governing Board as a whole, approve items to be placed on the agenda for each meeting. Consult with Board members on proposed agenda items. E, encourage and maintain orderly and democratic participation. E, keep all discussions factual and on subject at hand. F, allow for full and complete exploration of each item of business. In the absence of President of the, I'm sorry, in the absence of the President of the Board, the Vice President shall assume this position temporarily and perform all functions of the President. In the absence of both the President and the Vice President, the remaining three Board Members shall elect a temporary President for that meeting only. The minutes of the meeting shall reflect the election of the temporary President. Vice President. The Vice President or President in the absence of the Vice President or other designated of the Board shall be responsible for the review of all expense vouchers prior to the Board meetings in which action is scheduled and sign such paperwork or documents required by Board or by law. That is it.
Thank you. With that, I will now accept nominations for the President.
President, Vice President, I'd like to nominate, please.
Mr. Herrera, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Vice President Bill Adams. Would you accept?
Thank you, sir. Yes, I will. And with that, I will read, forgive me, I'm just going to read a brief statement on why I wish to be the President. I believe the district will be best served with a Board President that has a leadership experience within the district, and I've had that experience during difficult times. The Board President, I've been, I was a Board President during the Red for Ed movement, and while it was a very challenging time for our Washington, our WESD family, we were able to support our students, staff, and community. Most importantly, now is the time, now is not the time for any outside distractions that may affect the performance of our Board. The Board President must, I'm sorry, the Board President must have the ability to talk to and communicate with all Board Members directly. We need to stay focused, partner with our administration, staff, families, and community to get us through the pandemic. Stability, continuity, and keeping personal issues off the table will show our community we are one Board, united. Being a past President and current Vice President for the past two years, I would very much wish to continue on and ask for your support as our next WESD Board President. Thank you. Are there any other, forgive me, I have to, so are there any other nominations for the Board President?
Mr. Vice President, I would like to nominate Nikki Whaley for President.
Ms. Whaley, do you accept?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Do you have a statement?
And I'll, I'll just take a couple moments to thank you for the nomination, Ms. Be already, Abbott Be already, and say that over the course of my time at WESD, I think that I have watched the Boards run efficiently. I've learned from the Board Presidents of past, and I feel that I am up to the challenge of being Board President. I also know that with two new Board Members on, I understand what it's like to be a new Board Member. I also understand the challenges of onboarding and guiding new Board Members through that process. I also believe that I can lead with professionalism, and I do have the time and the willingness to dedicate to any extra, any extra duties that may fall during these crisis times, and also the extra duties that may come with the fact that we do have two new Board Members, and would appreciate the opportunity to serve. As we've had such great leaders in the past, I'd like the opportunity to do that as well.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask, Ms. Tucker, to take a roll call vote, please.
Yes, I will ask, I will do a roll call vote, and I will ask that you say the name of the person in which you are going to vote for. Mr. Herrera.
Bill Adams.
Ms. Jenny Abbott Bayardi.
Nikki Whaley.
Ms. Whaley.
Nikki Whaley.
Mr. Adams.
Bill Adams.
And Ms. Lindsey Peterson.
Bill Adams.
Bill Adams, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Adams.
No, I, I was going to say, thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to continue, to continue to be the President. Thank you so much, everybody, and we will work closely together.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you so much. With that, we'll go, move on to the Vice Presidents. Do I have a nomination for Vice President?
Mr. Adams, I have a nomination.
Mr. Herrera?
Ms. Lindsey Peterson.
Great.
And Mr. Adams, I wanted just to explain my nomination. I think that, you know, one of the things that, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and I think one of the biggest things that maturity and integrity and, you know, overall, just honesty and pure, you know, the, for, you know, these positions are number one, the number one responsibility for these positions are the district. It's not ourselves, it's not any specific group, it's not any one gender or nationality, it's the district first, students and the parents, obviously, and really, you know, I've come a long way on this board, and I think one of the, one of the best things I've ever learned is being on, I've been on both sides of the spectrum, and I think for me, you know, the reason I've never taken it before is because it's really, you, you represent, you don't have any power much more than any of the Board Members, but you represent the Board, and, and that position right there, and plus, it's a lot of work, by the way. You, you just, you're, you're the, you represent, you speak for all of us, and not just the Vance, but also, it's a big responsibility, is what I'm trying to say is, and, and I hope that nobody else takes it in offense that, you know, they didn't get nominated, or we didn't vote for them. It's, it's not that, it's, it's just, I think that, one of the main things is, is, I watch, I want everybody to know and explain my nominations, is that we're in the middle of a pandemic. There's, we've lost 1,500 students. Teachers are leaving by the dozen, and we, we need leadership. We need, you know, proven leadership, effective leadership, that's going to work good with the administration, that's going to, that's going to be there, do the right thing, even though it's going to be, going to make those tough decisions, even when one of us says, "Look, I, yeah, I, I know I may be right, you're, you're wrong, but, you know, we have to do what's right for the district." And, and, you know, saying that, sometimes that's hard, you know, sometimes that's hard. And I've had these discussions with previous Board Members that, man, I tell you what, it was difficult just to get something across, and, and sometimes, you know, I felt that personal bias was in the way, and unfortunately, you know, you know, at the end of the day, the end result was, it wasn't, it was, it was me wanting one thing, and again, it's maturity. So, yeah, I applaud, you know, Bill for accepting that and for taking that on. I hope that, you know, you know, you take it, you take this tonight and in consideration to, to help us grow, take this in the right direction, and, you know, you have two new Board Members, I mean, what could be possibly better than that, right? You have, you know, and you have Nikki to help, and I mean, it's just, you're going to be in a great position, you know, we would help you, and, and then, of course, and, you know, would help both of you, so, just know that you both have my support. Thank you.
And so, you've nominated Lindsey to be Vice President, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And, Ms. Peterson, do you accept that nomination?
I do accept that nomination, and I just want to say that I've always been a person that's going to do what's best for my team, and if this is what's best for the team, I'm here to support our kids and our district, and, and I'm just happy to serve.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations for Vice President?
Mr. Vice President, I would like to nominate Nikki Whaley for Vice President.
Ms. Whaley, do you accept?
Sure. Yes, I do.
Thank you. Okay, so are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Tucker, would you be kind enough to do a roll call, please?
Okay, this is a roll call for the Vice Presidency. We have two nominations, so please, when I call your name, list the person in which you are voting for. Can I please, Mr. Herrera?
Lindsey Peterson.
Ms. Jenny Abbott Bayardi.
Nikki Whaley.
Thank you. Ms. Lindsey Peterson.
Nikki Whaley.
Ms. Nikki Whaley.
Nikki Whaley.
Mr. Adams.
Ms. Peterson, please.
Okay, so I have three.
Shannon, can you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry, we have three, too. I just want to make sure I got this right, Bill. Okay, I apologize. It looks like Nikki Whaley.
Congratulations.
Congratulations for Vice President.
Excuse me, wait, 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 excuse me. It went to Mrs. Peterson. I voted for Mrs. Peterson, now I had Mrs. Peterson, and Mrs. Peterson had Mrs. Peterson.
No. I actually voted Nikki Whaley.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Peterson voted for Ms. Whaley. Ms. Peterson voted for Ms. Whaley.
So Ms. Peterson accepted the position and voted for Ms. Whaley?
Yes, sir.
The nomination.
Okay, hey, Ms. Whaley, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and I apologize, I did not hear it, so I apologized, everybody. Congratulations. All right, with that, we now have a new Board, and so let's work together and do the best that we can for our parents and our teachers. And so with that, let's move on to a moment of silence, please, and now's a good time to, to think about what our country is going through, what our families are going through, and just, just thoughts for health and well-being for everybody. Thank you. And so, Dr. Stan, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, President Adams. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And so now, we've got, we're on to Action Item E, adoption of the January 14, 2021 regular meeting agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Ms. Whaley. I'll go ahead and second it. So all those in favor?
I'll do a second.
Okay, Larry, you got it. So Larry will second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, so, are there any, all those, so it's unanimous, yes? So we'll move on?
Yes.
And now we'll go with the approval of the December 10th Executive Regular Session, your minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved, President Adams.
Thank you, Ms. Whaley. And may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Are there any abstentions? Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And, thank you. So we'll move on to Agenda Item G, Current Events and Acknowledgements, Governing Board and Superintendent. Any fellow Board Members have anything they'd like to acknowledge, or any events they've been to?
Yeah, I have something, Bill.
Go ahead, Mr. Herrera.
So, I went to visit Acatillo A++ A+, I think that's, and I was talking to the principal and, and over the Christmas holiday, I was talking to the staff there. I didn't know.
Mr. Herrera, we're losing you there, we're losing you. Ms. Tucker at the line with Mr. Herrera, are you doing okay?
Mr. Herrera, I apologize, we lost you. Anybody else?
President Adams.
Vice President Whaley.
Thank you. I would just like to say that, a big thank you to all of our teachers, they, especially they came back, things are worse than ever, and they all came back, so I would like to thank them for that, but also just transitioning, I know that things have gotten worse over the holidays, and there's been some tough times in the news and tough times here in our state with regards to, you know, the role of teachers, and I just want to say thank you to all of them for standing strong, and I'm also encouraged that.
We got what we wanted.
We got, I'm also want to thank, I'm also encouraged that we have access to the vaccine, and I know that I want, we'll be hearing a little bit more of that, but I just want to acknowledge the work of Mr. Wing and his department in helping our teachers and our staff get access to that as quickly as possible. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And any other, any other Board Members wish to acknowledge anything or events?
Mr. Adams, go ahead.
If I could see your pictures, it would make it easier.
Jenny, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Lindsey. Mr. President Adams, Mr. Adams, President, I'm sorry. So I just want to say thank you, I've been to the new Board Member Orientation at the District Office many times this week, trying to figure out my computer and my phone and so forth, but everybody's been so wonderful and welcoming, and I really appreciate it, and I really look forward to being a part of this wonderful team on the Board, but also for WSD family as well.
Wonderful. Ms. Peterson?
Thank you, President Adams. I just wanted to echo the comments of Ms. Abbott Bayardi and Ms. Whaley and say both how grateful I've been for the welcoming I've received from District Staff and just at the District Office, and just everyone has been so great, and the Board as well. And then also, just to just, again, express that appreciation to the teachers of our district, the staff of our district. You know, at the beginning of this, I saw somebody posted something on social media of a teacher, and they're like, "Look how amazing this teacher is," and I thought, "Well, that teacher looks just like every teacher that my kids have had in their, in their, in their classrooms, and just the level of energy they're putting out." And it's exhausting, and it's amazing, and I just, looking at my kindergartner and seeing the progress she's made this year in this setting, it's, it's because of our teachers, and I'm just so grateful for them, so, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll go ahead and just mention, I'm going to echo everything that's just been said. I also want to acknowledge our community, and over the last couple weeks, we've been gone for a while, obviously, the communication that we receive, again, very, very respectful, positions are taken. I also want to thank our communications, Pam, you know, the wonderful job you do, and regards to communication that is going out to the community, it's very, very strong and very much appreciated. So thank you, Administration, thank you, everybody, and again, welcome to a new year. And with that, I'll go ahead and move on to public participation. Ms. Tucker?
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry, stop. Forgive me, forgive me, it's been a while. Dr. Stan, do you have anything?
President Adams, members of the Board, members of the audience, since our last Board meeting, I too attended the ASBA New Board Orientation, where our own two new Board Members participated as well. Thank you for that training and attending. Mr. Wing, myself, and Ms. Thompson have been meeting also with our legislators, it's obviously legislative season, so we had a chance to meet since the last meeting with Senator Boyer and Senator Marsh. I do want to thank Carrie and Lori D. up in Academic Services. We had a Native American meeting before the break, and it was wonderful, and I just want to thank them for our Native American meeting. They're doing a great job there, totally appreciate that. I too attended the Acatillo A+, and I know as many of you did too, it was wonderful. Dr. Murawski, thank you and your team for what's a wonderful job. They did a drive-through celebration, and, and they made it so warm for the families that drove through, the honking of the horns, the fire department actually came too with their, of course, with their sirens going, and that was very, very wonderful as well. I do also want to say thank you to the IBN team, we started the IBN process in our district, interest-based negotiation, and thank you so much to all the teammates that are a part of that. Later on, we'll be talking about the closed pod discussion, but I want to thank Brian Capistran from Glendale Union High School District for working with us, to work on what's called a closed pod, we'll get to that later. I do want to talk, thank, we had a PLA, which is a professional leadership this past week, and there were a lot of great things happening. Our admin coaches worked on the CNA process, the Fishbone, which is trying to figure out your root causes. Lori Mora worked on goal-setting with our principals. Deidre was great with the continuous improvement process, and Carrie, who is our new Director of Assessment, was wonderful with her data work, so I just want to say a big shout-out and thank you to everyone, you know, the work continues, and we have, and we're blessed to have an incredible team here in Washington. And so thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to share some of those. Welcome back.
Thank you, Dr. Stan, and I'll try to get this together and make sure that you're always included. So from there, we'll go over to public participation, please.
President Adams, we did not receive any request for public participation.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. And with that, we'll go for, I'd like to have, may we please have a motion for the approval of the Consent Agenda Item, please.
So moved, Mr. Adams.
Wait, wait, I apologize. Does anybody wish to pull any of those items before we move forward? Hearing none? Mr. Herrera, I have a motion. May I have a second, please? I'll go ahead and second?
I'll second.
Okay, who's second?
Lindsey Peterson.
Thank you, Lindsey. So we have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. So now, we move down to...
Mr. Adams, would you like to acknowledge the gifts and donations?
I do.
Got your back.
Yeah, thank you. And if Mrs. Lambert is listening, she really had all this down, so forgive me for this taking a while. Please, if I may, I'd like to acknowledge the Academy Services, Mountain Sky Junior High, Sweetwater Elementary for their wonderful contributions. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, just, Ms. Tucker, if you'll put the cursor over the donor, maybe, I don't think you can see him, Mr. Adams, it's right there.
Oh, there you go. Again, I apologize, it's, I'm sorry, it's hard for me to see, I'm trying to do both of them here. So we have the, it's Assistant League of Phoenix, I believe?
That's right.
Donors' Choice and Kroger.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'll try to see if I can see it better. I'll do it on my side. With that, we move to Action Item 3, 3A, Approval of Extension of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. And this one goes to, is it Mr. Wing? Mr. Wing, please.
Good evening, Governing Board. Congratulations, Mr. Adams, Mrs. Whaley. You're likely aware, the Family First Coronavirus Act was implemented by federal administration near April, around the beginning stages of the pandemic, or the first month of the COVID pandemic. It was a paid leave time specific to COVID for employees and their families. For whatever reason, it had an expiration date of December 31, 2020, and even with the new or most recent stimulus package, an essential was not included in that. Like many school districts, I are, let me rephrase that, I did leverage our interest-based negotiation team, and for those who are new, we do have what we call an IBN team with nine certified, nine classified, and three administrators who are voting members, along with some non-voting resource members. I leveraged that committee to, for us to consider whether or not we wanted to provide some type of paid sick leave resulting in a positive case of COVID for various reasons. One is to retain our, retain our employees. We still have to follow various health official guidelines, so when an individual tests positive, they are not permitted to return to work for 10 days. Individuals may not have had leave time accrued to cover those 10 days and be paid, resulting in individuals being unpaid, or on an absence that is unpaid, and with the quantity, we were just concerned about losing potential employees because of that. And so what we did is, we went through the interest-based strategies and asking for your approval on our recommendation. The recommendation is to kind of extend, FERCRA, it's not full FERCRA, but basically a paid sick leave for employees who test positive of COVID, retro to January 1, the day after the expiration of FERCRA, through June 30th, the remainder of the school year. That we pay up to 10 days of paid sick leave, again, for those with a confirmed diagnosis. One day is equivalent to their assigned hour, so a three-hour crossing guard will have 10 three-hour days, and a full-time employee will have 10 eight-hour days. Again, it's only if it's confirmed, because we're bringing this to you at the first Board meeting in January, January 14th, if this does get approved, we will retro back and reimburse individuals who used their leave time last week. Also, if, with the new administration, if FERCRA gets added back in, or if the state provides it, we would just void this, hopefully approved paid sick leave, and then apply what the law would require. And just a reminder, it is for the rest of this school year, as long as an individual is employed with us. And with that, I'm open for any, any questions.
Thank you. Board Members, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. This is Nikki Whaley.
Hi, Nikki, go ahead.
First of all, I'm just really grateful that we're considering this. It was a bit short-sighted, I think, to arbitrarily pick the end of December, I'm sure there's some thought in that, but I'm so glad that our district has looked to, to find a provision for our staff should they get this unfortunate virus. My only question was, and I didn't really see too much information, can you talk to us a little bit about where the funding is coming for this and how that's working out?
Certainly. When we budget for our, for staffing, we budget for every work calendar day as if the employee gets paid. So if I'm, if I'm present today, I get paid, if I use my sick leave, I get paid, if we apply this paid sick leave, I get paid. So there's actually not an extra cost for this. There would be, obviously, if I'm not able to work from home, and I do need to take advantage of this, due to the significance of my illness or whatnot, you would lose out on maybe labor hours, you would have to find a sub, and that could be an extra cost, even though during COVID, school districts fill rate with substitutes are, have significantly declined, so that would be maybe the new cost, but as far as the person being out for 10 days and getting paid, it's under the same budget as if they worked those, those 10 days.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Board Members, any more, any other questions?
I had a question. This is Ms. Peterson. So this is to be used for... So this is to be used for any employee, so even if an employee has accrued sick days at this point, so if I, if I am a teacher and I have 20 sick days that I've accrued over my career, I still, I'm not going to have to dip into those. I will get those 10 days and I can keep my days, is that how that would work?
Yeah. Those who, you know, if you experience, if you tested positive or COVID the day before, January 3rd, the Sunday before coming in, you were, you contacted human resources and we notify you, you are not to return for, for 10 days or whatever the increment is, depending on when their results are. But in this case, January 3rd, they, they wouldn't be able to come last week and this week. They may have already, because there wasn't the FERC expired, they could use their own leave time, their leave accruals to get paid. So we were having them use their, but if you approve, if the board approves it today, we will go back and reimburse them so they don't lose their leave accrual. So the answer is, you can have zero days or 300, like I do. You don't, you will not be deducted any of your leave accruals based on this matter.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Board members, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, then we have, I have a motion, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And this is an action item, so may I have a motion? Ms. Whaley, would you be kind enough to do it?
I would love to, and I would recommend that the governing board approve extending the paid sick leave benefit as outlined for the time period of January 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2021.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I second it.
Okay.
Ms. Abbott, you're...
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
So that's unanimous, and it passes. And with that, I'm going to move on to action item number four, A, COVID-19 update. And Dr. Stanton, would you please take it?
President Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, as we've been now doing since the pandemic began, we go around, which is now the virtual DIAS, but we've been updating the board for many weeks from each of our departments as to what's happening with, related to the COVID pandemic. So first will be Dr. Bailey. Dr. Bailey, would you please discuss what's happening from the academic support type functions?
Thank you, and happy new year to our board members. Congratulations to President Adams and Vice President Ms. Whaley, also our continuing board member, Larry Herrera, and welcome, Ms. Peterson and Ms. Abbott, you're very willing to work with you, so welcome. I'm, I'm going to give an update, a COVID update on four different items. One of them is on student attendance and what we're doing to really promote student attendance in this virtual type of environment. Also, what we're doing for an after-school academy, then getting into our continuing onsite support, and then ending up with really promoting our Kinder Roundup, which is coming up in about a week and a half. So, um, student attendance, we're always concerned about student attendance, especially in this virtual type of environment. So basically, what we've decided to do is to really look at a system type of approach. And we have a number of different departments that are working on it. For instance, our climate and culture committee is working on what are interventions to work with students, especially in the social and emotional type of area. So that's one department that's working on it. We have our FACE group that has started to also meet again, and they're actually looking at a district-wide event, actually a district-wide event that's coming in April, and they'll be able to give you a little bit more information about that as we continue on into the spring. So really promoting student attendance. We also have a, a data group that is really looking at getting the most accurate information to our teachers and our staff in the schools on student attendance, to make sure that they have that, that up-to-date data. We also have what's called a safety and mentoring department, and our mentors have really, that are part of that safety and mentoring department, are really working one-on-one with some of the students that, to really promote student attendance. So it's really a district-wide event, and we'll be telling you more as we continue on in the spring. Our after-school academy is in actually 22 schools, and this is before and after-school classes. They're virtual, so at this point, they, what they're really doing is, they're always very creative in how they actually really promote our achievements. And this time, they're actually providing our students with devices so that they can listen to podcasts. It's sort of a listen, walk, learn type of program, and the podcasts are actually aligned with our reading and math type of programs. They also have a social and emotional type of component and really promoting that messages out into the home and community, as well as some enrichment classes that are on fitness, on CSI, and even on escape rooms. So really very type of approach. We're looking at approximately about 1,000 students being involved in that program this spring. Our onsite support has been, been offered in the spring and is continuing on. And onsite support means that all 32 of our schools are open for students to come in and bring their Chromebook with them. We follow all of the CDC guidelines, students have to wear masks, their temperature checked, their symptom screened. They then are actually set up with, with a desk six feet away from other students. We have support personnel that are actually supervising those students and making sure that they have all the support that they need. Last week, we had about 780 students coming to our school daily, so to really, really support our students. And last but not least is our Kinder Roundup, and I know Ms. Peterson talked about her child being in kindergarten. So our Kinder Roundup is, this is Tuesday, January 26th, and because of the guidelines that we're under, it's a drive-through, and the drive-through means that each one of our 27 schools will have an event from 4:00 to 6:00, and there will be checkpoints along the way. For instance, parents will be able to receive information about that specific school and then go to the next checkpoint online, how to register online, and then go to the next checkpoint, get some type of materials from the schools, then PTO checkpoint. So all along the way that they will be able to receive some information, we're really promoting this. We really want our future Kinder students to get real excited about coming to school in August. To actually promote this, our individual schools are actually putting a information out via Facebook that will be out in all 27 of our sites by Tuesday, the 19th. Also, Tuesday, the 19th, we're having something called Facebook Live, and that will be at 4:30, and really promoting our, our January 26th event, and that will be actually produced by our CAPE department, and principals and teachers will be involved in that. So exciting events coming up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry, a little technical difficulty there. Mr. President Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, next up, we will have Mr. Wang with his human resources update regarding COVID-19.
Hello again, governing board, audience. Things, some of you have already mentioned it, the middle of last week, we started getting up more meaningful details of the vaccine. We knew it was coming, but just more details and specifics regarding dates. All K-12 employees and governing board members as well are grouped in what's called Phase 1B, which means beginning of this week, we could begin registering for the first dose of the COVID vaccine at one of the few open pods in Maricopa County. We began immediately providing updates to all employees and governing board, I believe you get those emails as well. I felt like we're doing it every day just because there were changes or new updates, so I appreciate all the staff and their patience. We were just trying to make sure we were prompt and getting them the information that they needed. We are working to get a closed pod to provide vaccines to our employees, partnering with Glendale Union, Glendale Elementary, and some other local schools. Honestly, Glendale Union is working with Maricopa County, mostly taking the lead and facilitating it because the initial thought would be maybe best for to leverage maybe a high school gym, which may be larger, and that the elementary feeder schools can go in there, so I appreciate Glendale Union and their administration for assisting with that. This is the time of the year we work on staffing for next year, projecting staffing, kind of COVID-related, because with the significant decrease of enrollment due to COVID, projecting student enrollment and teacher staffing is pretty complex, and we're looking at different scenarios regarding that. Human resources continues to handle COVID cases or potential COVID cases with staff during the winter break and all the way through now, and we'll be adding this FERC extension, this basically the extension that you guys just recently approved. Thank you. I do want to thank the employees for promptly notifying HR when they are feeling symptoms, when they are getting tested, and when they do get the positive test results, if they were to get it. I appreciate Katie Sanchez, our insurance coordinator, and her team for handling it. They're basically the COVID department nowadays. Again, I use the IBN team to, and use the interest-based strategies recently to generate that FERC extension recommendation. And it's something we haven't, we're going to have to do, is reconvene the teacher evaluation Last year, we had to make an adjustment to, or we made a recommendation to the governing board in which you approved a change to the student data component that's required in the teacher evaluation process and the performance pay plan. Last year is because AZ Merit due to COVID did not occur, and that's one of the components of our student data part. This year, we're considering whether or not to use a different data source for another year and make a recommendation to you. As, as a result, because one, we're uncertain if AZ Merit will occur, and two, is that really the data source we want to use? We've had at least two different school years impacted based on COVID, so teacher evaluation will bring a recommendation to you at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, next, Mrs. Mora will give her update regarding academic services related to COVID, the COVID pandemic.
Good evening, President Adams, governing board members, community. Thank you for this opportunity once again to share what we're doing with our academics. As was mentioned, our teachers came back ready for a third quarter. We had provided them with the lessons, but it was their hard work, and I know many of them spent much of their time over the break just getting ready and being ready and present for our students. So we do appreciate all the efforts that went into that, because we did have a very smooth start, and classrooms were ready, students were logging in, and it, it just felt good to get back and back to our routine. Once again, these lessons were designed with priority standards to focus on for this quarter, and that's been the case for each of the quarters that we've done. So once again, all of our students are getting focused instruction on those standards that we know will have the biggest impact in building their skills. We do have teams already working on those quarter four lessons. We are optimistic and looking forward that we will be back in person as soon as it's safe to do so. So when we're designing these lessons, they can be used either in person or online, and once again, we're going to really focus on those standards that we know that our students absolutely need to build those skills that are going to be important for the remainder of the school year. We're embedding those engaging technology tools, and once again, whether it's going to be online or in person, our students will have access to the, those opportunities to work with some of the materials that they're being offered with. We are in the process of doing our middle-of-the-year assessment, and we had a very tight assessment window this year due to all of the, the factors of the closure, so it isn't that far off from when we did our beginning-of-the-year benchmark. But once again, we really are looking at how do we get the information that we need to make good decisions about how we support our students and our teachers moving forward. We did break the assessment up into two sections rather than one longer assessment. Two reasons for that, one, it's a little hard to keep our students online long enough to complete a lengthy assessment, but also our teachers had concerns about making sure that we weren't taking too much instructional time away. So we are giving two shorter benchmark assessments, which will allow us to, once again, gather that important data that we need to really determine interventions, strategy, what do we need to do to support all students. And so we are looking forward to getting some more data to work with. As Dr. Bailey mentioned, we do have our FACE committee back up and running. That team met for the first time this week, and I would like to thank the, the teachers, the administrators, we had Health Tech, you know, we have several, several different stakeholders on that committee. And once again, as was mentioned, we are focusing on attendance, but it was great dialogue and conversation about how we partner to make sure that we are supporting our students in being successful, being in attendance, being online, having what they need to work through this. And so I'm looking forward to a continued work with that group. It's such an important bringing of stakeholders together, and the communication is going to be vital in helping us to make some great decisions moving forward. So, thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you.
And before I move on to Ms. Thompson, we use a lot of acronyms in education, so FACE means family and community engagement. This is Mora.
Family and community engagement, yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, yeah, for the parents and community out there, FACE is our family and community engagement, it's a big part of our district, and so thank you, Ms. Mora, for the update on that. Continuing around the DIAS, Mrs. Thompson, would you please update the board related to business services and the COVID pandemic?
Thank you, Dr. Stanton. Welcome to our new board members, and congratulations to our new officers. Tonight, I'm basically going to give an update, it's COVID-related, because I think this whole pandemic has caused us to have a pretty large decrease in our student enrollment. And I just want to touch base with how that impacts the district and how it's going to be offset with some of the federal grants that we're going to receive. We are still down over 2,000 students, almost about 2,200, actually. Fortunately, we, the, it has not affected our budget by that many students. Our ADM is only down about 1,700, so we've had students, the ones we do have, we've had them in class most of the time, we've had them here most of the year. We did revise our budget based upon student loss in December. We did get the Enrollment Stabilization Grant from the governor's office, and that grant has already been spent. We utilized it to reduce expense in our MNO budget to cover that reduction we had to do in December. So, so far, we're, we're doing okay. The difficult thing that we have right now is that that reduction to budget had to do with the loss of student reduction. The other reductions that are occurring in, in our budget for this year have to do with the amount of time that we're in distance learning. We have a decreased funding amount, we, 95% FTE. Those, those reductions will continue in our budget for this year. We, we have budget balance carried forward to help cover that. We are hoping to revise our ESAR grant with ADE to see whether we can maybe offset some of our budget reductions for that, that piece. We're working with groups and talking to our legislators about can we find a way to fund 100% of those students rather than the reduced amount? So we're trying all different avenues to try to make sure that we, we keep our budget whole as much as possible this year. I'm thinking we're going to be okay. We have to, you know, look at things and make sure that it's all working out right, and the difficulty is, we don't have a lot of answers on any given day. So we are trying, I think we are doing all right. I think we will be able to apply, you know, revise our grant, do other, have a different picture on how we're utilizing the remaining ESAR grant. Also related is just recently, the new federal stimulus is awarding over $1 billion to the state of Arizona. That will go a lot, it's to school districts based upon our Title I and our free and reduced lunch percentages in our district. We should get quite a bit more in that funding source. We haven't heard what those dollar amounts are specifically yet, but those funds can be used as we start thinking about how are our numbers, Justin mentioned earlier, that we have, we're thinking about staff... we have, we're thinking about staffing for next year, and what is our number of students going to be? When we start looking at next year and the following year, this new grant could help us cover any reductions and revenue that we think we might be having for the next two years. So I just kind of wanted to give you a quick update on that, because I know there's a lot of concern out there about what is really happening. I think we have some things we have to worry about and think about, but I don't think that it's that we're going to be completely devastated, because the federal funding that's kind of going to come to our district is going to be very beneficial to us as far as trying to react to this, trying to figure out how we're going to help our students make up for anything they may have lost in this period of time and things like that. We are continuing with the grant, paying for any of the additional costs for COVID-related items, and that is also how we're funding any new student devices we need to buy and any hotspots for our families. So we haven't had to take that out of our regular budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. And I will conclude the COVID update from the superintendent's office. Ms. Tucker, if you'll go ahead and put up the metrics.
So for our public audience and our board, this is a part of our return to reopening plan version. It shows our, talks about the community spread and the different versions of education, the traditional, the hybrid, and the virtual. You can see the indicators there talk about what school districts are supposed to do when they're in those. We're obviously right now in the virtual offerings right now in education, and Ms. Tucker, if you'll go to the second slide, please. Our current, our current, to the right, on the right of the document, you'll see that our overall risk is substantial. We are to be, according to the recommendation, it is virtual with the onsite support. You heard Dr. Bailey talk about onsite support earlier. You can see that our numbers, the week prior is at the lower seven numbers, and the current week is the, just above it. You'll see that we moved up to 749 in the cases per 100,000. Our percent positivity is now at 20, oops, I'm sorry, Ms. Tucker, my eyes are there, is about 26%. And the COVID-like illness is actually 14%. The cases per 100,000 are supposed to be below 100. The percent positivity, depending on where we're in, you'll see over on the right, the where it's supposed to be, traditional would be under 5% positivity, hybrid would be under 7%, and of course, anything above 10% is considered distance learning along the way. We have talked before, and the board approved that for our reopening plan, that we would use the metrics, and we continue to look at those, and so we're going to continue to do that. We particularly focus on the cases per 100,000 percent positivity. I do want to mention, I mentioned earlier that we are working with Glendale Union. Thank you, Mr. Wing, for your update. I talked to Mr. Capistran before our meeting. I just want to know that the next steps for those closed pods, I do want to clarify for the public, that the open pods are the five locations plus the Cardinal Stadium across the valley. Those places, as Mr. Wing mentioned, 1B folks were trying to sign up. I understand now that actually they're not taking any more registrations until the 19th of January because there's been such high demand, thus why we're also working with Glendale Union, Glendale L for our own what's called closed pod. They're working with assigning a pharmacy or pharmacies to our school districts, and then we'll set up the locations as Justin Messon's most likely we're thinking at some high schools, but that'll be up to Mr. Capistran to pick the location based on his configurations. But that's what we're waiting on. We hope to have those up and going by the end of this month. And some key stuff for staff and folks out there, you must make sure your first and second dose are the same vaccine. So there's the Pfizer and the Moderna. It appears that they'll be using the Pfizer at the open sites, and we may have the Moderna coming to us at the closed site. So thus, we'll have to be careful and make sure our staff gets the right one. So we're working on it right now. We're excited to get to the point where we have that for our staff, and of course, the location would be very close if it's Glendale Union High School. Finally, I'd like to address and remind everyone on the board and in the public, I know the governor spoke on Monday, and that's his state of the state. The governor's budget comes out tomorrow, and that is, of course, his proposed budget, and then it goes through the legislative process. So we will have to, you know, wait for the process to work, let the process work is our common statement, to see where we end up with the budget and any requirements for school district. And with that, my team is ready to take any board questions.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
The information is always like amazing. Board members, any questions?
Uh-uh.
Okay, hearing none.
Hi, Mr. Adams, I do, I was just going to wait to see if anybody else did.
Ms. Whaley, please.
Thank you. A couple of questions. First one on attendance. I was wondering if we've seen any trends in terms of attendance? Is there any particular site or sites or grade level that we're seeing any declines or increased absenteeism? And then with the onsite learning attendance, I know we said 780 students daily, is that up or down from last semester?
Dr. Bailey?
Thank you, board members, and Ms. Whaley in particular. The, there has been an increase in onsite support. We were averaging about 500, 550, and we've increased that, and we really, the schools have really done a lot of work in calling parents and really offering, making sure that they knew that there was onsite support, especially those students, Ms. Whaley, that were having difficulties, maybe with technical difficulties at home, even if they had a hotspot or the Chromebook, sometimes the environment was not conducive for those students. So we have seen an increase, probably really close to 200, an increase, and it seems to be increasing every single week. And Ignacio Mercado, who is in our climate and culture group, has really been working with the individual schools, and I really must commend the transportation department that has really have been working individually as support personnel in every single one of our schools as supervisors. As far as attendance, we've actually, there has been a concerted effort for attendance, so we've actually seen an increase. And with, in future board members, I'd really like to give you some information on that. The schools have really been really concentrating on that, and in fact, one school we were hearing today at a committee meeting had increased their attendance by 6% and with different strategies, especially with teachers really reaching out and working with students. So at a future board meeting, I'd like to give you some more information on that.
Thank you so much, and I just really appreciate that our educators are proactively reminding families that are struggling, teachers or students that are struggling, that there is an option for them. I know that there are a lot of people upset that they just feel like that it's, online's not working for them, but I think that being proactive and offering that onsite support for those families that can get some hands-on help should they need it is really good, and I thank them all for taking that extra effort. The other question I have is for Ms. Mora, and that is if we could talk about, I mean, for the last semester, we've talked about the social, emotional needs that need, and I don't mean social workers and programming, that kind of social, emotional needs, because I know we've heard reports on that, but I mean, creating social time, social space for our kids because, you know, they're in the class. I will say, you know, I'm home and I hear the different teachers, and I think that teachers are all trying to make space for them to share what they did on the weekend or, you know, do a show and tell or, you know, try to add that little bit of interaction so it's not just one class after another. But I know that you were talking about at some point working to build in opportunities for social clubs or meeting kind of after school to do some social types of things, and we've been talking about it for about, well, since the beginning of the school year, just wondering if there's an update on that.
Yes, Ms. Whaley, we're working with the schools, and each school has been doing some individualized, different types of activities. Much of that depends on the staff that they have available, the interest of the students, and so here again, they are working to make sure that they are creating as many opportunities as possible. You do mention the social workers, and I know that is one piece, but many of them are also holding groups, doing some activities to bring students together, and so, you know, we continue to look for ways in which we can do that. It's difficult to do it as a system, because each campus is unique. I, you know, I do have to say, our after-school support programs are also looking at opportunities to do that, because we do appreciate that our students need that time to connect, and we will, you know, always continue to support our schools in any efforts that they have going on their campuses for that.
Okay, appreciate that. So maybe there's no kind of, well, when we did the curriculum, we did such a great job of getting people together so that everybody didn't have to reinvent the wheel, creating a curriculum for online and then sharing that with grade levels. Is there anything like that, like a toolkit that, because it is hit and miss, and it's not every teacher in it, and I know that we can't, we're not trying to mandate it, but I was just wondering if there's some kind of toolkit of the schools that are finding ways to provide that social time? And I know it depends on staffing, but do we have any kind of toolkit of ideas that is being shared with folks that are interested in doing that?
Dorothy Watkins does have a social and emotional learning committee group that's coming together, and they're looking at opportunities, and once again, they are working through their social workers to share that with the campuses, but they are, you know, they're exploring some of those great strategies that they can share that can be implemented on campuses.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mora, and thank you, Nikki. Are there any other questions, board members? Okay, hearing none. Lynn, Lori, Kathy, Justin, Walt, Doug Stanton, thank you so much for, again, another in-depth report on what's going on, the state of our district. Before we move on to action item number five, request for future reporting agenda items, I'm going to take a point of personal, can't remember what the word, proposition. Just for the record, I wanted to change my vote formally for the vice president to support Mrs. Whaley, and unfortunately, it's more complicated than I thought. It's not as simple as me just changing it. So, Ms. Whaley, if you want to make it formal, I'd be happy to, next agenda, and Mrs. Tucker can explain to us what the procedures are, because Robert's rules comes into play. But for the record right now, so it goes into the minutes, I am, I wish to change that vote in support of Mrs. Whaley. So with that, and Ms. Whaley, if you would, just let me know if you'd like to make it more formal, we can do that next agenda. And I congratulate you on the position. With that, I'll move on to action item number five, future agenda items, request for future reports and agenda items. Does anybody have anything? Hearing none. Here we go, the first meeting of 2021. May I have a motion for adjournment? Anybody?
We don't want this to end. So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Whaley. May I have a second, please?
I second.
Thank you. And who was it? I'm sorry.
Jenny, Ms. Abbott Bayarty.
Jenny, thank you so much. All those in favor, please signify by saying an aye.
Aye.
All, great, it's unanimous. And so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we will see you soon. Take care.
Take care. Be safe.